Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the April 12, 2021, meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, which suspends a requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, please dial 1-408-650-3123 and enter access code 235-235-861. Or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As a preliminary matter, this is Doreen Goodrich, Chair of the Board. Permit me to confirm that all numbers and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lionel Burfield?
Yes.
Dan Carpenter?
Yes.
Tristan LaLiberty?
Yes.
Scott Ren?
Yes.
And town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Manager Julie Jacobson?
Yes.
Our Assistant Town Manager Ed Casanovaich is expected to be present at 6:30. And Administrative Assistant Sharon Spikowski?
Yes.
Thank you. We do have a few public hearings this evening, and when we open those hearings, we'll ask a representative to identify themselves. Please note that this meeting is also being recorded by Auburn cable to the television. And also note that each vote taken tonight will be conducted by a roll call vote in accordance with the governor's guidance. Thank you. So we will now begin the meeting, which is the Town Managers' Evaluation. As those on the call or fellow board members know, the Town Manager knows, and anyone else on the call tonight, the Town Manager is evaluated annually on a standard evaluation form, and that is half of her evaluation. And then, goals that are set jointly with the Town Manager and the Board of Selectmen are half of her evaluation. Those scores are added, and a cumulative score is provided to the Town Manager. Vice Chairman LaLiberty and I met with Mrs. Jacobson on April 5 to provide her with information regarding her evaluation. A letter was provided to her, and tonight, we will go over that information. And I will ask if board members have any comments. As has been in practice, I will go from junior selectmen to senior selectmen, and the vice chair and the chair will go last. So it'll be Mr. Ren, Mr. Burfield, Mr. Carpenter, Mr. LaLiberty, and then the chair providing comments. So I think it's best if I read the letter that was provided to Mrs. Jacobson. Dear Julie, I'm pleased to provide you with a summary of your evaluation by the Board of Selectmen. As you know, board members were to submit their completed evaluations with any written comments to me so I could prepare a summary, cumulative scores, and a final overall scores. All members will provide comments at the public meeting. Again, I would like to acknowledge and thank you for the level of depth and detail in your self-evaluation. The additional information was especially useful and will become part of the record. There certainly was assistance to me, and I would assume all board members, in completing their evaluation. The evaluation was based on the approved evaluation form and three additional goals. The average Board of Selectmen score for the evaluation form was a 4.73 and ranged from a 3.0 to a perfect 5. And the average score of the three goals was 3.73 and ranged from a 3 to a perfect 5. Individual selectmen's scores were Chair Goodrich, 5; Vice Chair LaLiberty, 5; Mr. Carpenter, 3.61; Mr. Burfield, 5; and Mr. Ren, 5, for a range of 3.61 to a high of a perfect 5. Julie, I'm pleased to share with you an overall performance review score of 3.4.73. The public evaluation has been scheduled for the April 12 meeting. I am sure I speak for the entire board when I say I look forward to this meeting so all members can publicly acknowledge your hard work and dedication. Congratulations on your excellent review, and thank you for your dedication to the Town of Auburn. I look forward to working with you as we continue moving in a positive direction for the entire town. And Mrs. Jacobson has received that letter and the evaluation forms from each board member. So now I am going to open it up to board members. And Mr. Ren, I'm going to, with you, to have comment at tonight's meeting.
I do, thank you, Doreen Goodrich. Ms. Jacobson, Julie, this first year for me has been a period of getting acclimated to the obligations and the responsibilities of being a selectman. And your attention to detail and how thorough you have been with any time I've had any questions whatsoever, the materials provided for the meetings. By profession or by trade, I like to get into those details. I like reviewing everything. And wow, sometimes I'm like, she overdoes it, but that's not a bad thing whatsoever. You're really thorough, and you really made my job a lot easier in terms of evaluating things and knowing that I'm making an informed vote on each matter that we have before. Really made my job much, much easier. So I can't sing your praises enough, especially in the year that we've had, all the other, the extra things on top of your day-to-day obligations, all the extra COVID-related changes, and it really was a moving target all year, and you kept hitting that mark. So I mean, if I could give you more than a five, you'd have a outstanding job this year. So I'll keep my comments short. That's really all I got, and thank you again.
Thank you. Ms. Burfield?
Okay, sorry about that. So what I did was decide to write down what I saw this year in the past as well. But my comments are, first and foremost, we just went through almost an entire 2020 with a pandemic that meant dealing with sick days, altering schedules, supporting families, setting up new policies, and literally and physically changing the structure of how our town offices and departments look and run. Not to mention that because of Julie's reputation, she is often asked to be on state and regional advisory committees that make decisions that trickle down to the Town of Auburn. I was also impressed with the system that Auburn had set up to administer vaccines here in town, but disappointed that our system was put on hold by the ever-changing decisions of our state management. Julie and Ed have continued to take on collective bargaining duties, which saves the town an incredible amount of money in attorney's fees alone. I am a supporter of collective bargaining because I believe that it incorporates a much more personal side to understanding everyone's needs and wants. It seems that by the time negotiations are completed, there is only a brief period before preparation for the next negotiation sessions will start up again. And you know, this is something that I think we can't even appreciate how many hours Julie and Ed put into this. We have building projects going on at two former elementary schools, as well as the project off of Blaker Street. And though I don't believe Julie has to have a daily involvement, I'm sure that she has been keeping up with phase details of these projects pretty close to daily. She and her staff are always actively working with companies like the Auburn Mall and groups like the Auburn Chamber of Commerce to keep the business end of our town growing, which has an impact on all of our town taxes. We have a downtown Drury Square project that is ever-evolving with the vision of someday making that area a place for families to park and walk and enjoy a downtown with its shops and fields and courts and restaurants. We are actively working on possibilities of a new public safety facility and the many sides to a project like that, which I'm sure has Julie in many discussions, meetings, and PowerPoint demonstrations. These are huge tasks, and name just a few things that our Town Manager and Town Administration are constantly working on, along with their day-to-day operations of running a town. I'm sure that I haven't even scratched the surface on what Julie and her administration does day-to-day, and for that, Julie and her administration will always get a perfect score from me on the evaluation. I have seen over the past five years that Julie appreciates our scores, but in no way sits on her laurels and coasts into the next year. She and her administration continue to strive to make this a happy, fun, safe, and efficient place to live and work. We, as a town, need to realize how lucky we are to have Julie, Ed, and all of the Town Administrators and employees for all that they do for Auburn. Our town is truly a leader for many communities, and for that, we should be very proud. I look forward to the next year to see the ongoing changes and growth to our town. Thank you, Julie, for all that you do. Thank you, Ed, for all that you do. Thank you, all Town Administrators, Department Heads, and employees for all that you do. I'm very proud of this town, always have been, but even more so now with everything that we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burfield. Mr. Carpenter, did you want to make any comments?
Keeping with my custom, I'm happy to meet with the manager if she has any questions, but I consider this something between her and I, and I always enjoy listening to the other board members' comments and reviewing what they've written and give to us. So I stand ready to meet with her if she would like and wish her well in the year ahead. I'm looking forward to it as well. And with that, I'll yield the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Ms. LaLiberty?
Thank you. To the Town Manager, so I want to keep my comments brief too, since I don't usually say a lot anyway. But this was the first year that I gave a perfect score, and that's not to say that in the past few years that I've been on the board, you and your team haven't done outstanding work that deserved high scores and high praise. But I think this year, it was just so clear, the work that you and your team did because of the pandemic, and we really got to see all of the work put in. So when the board voted on your goals this past year, we had a lot of uncertainty and really didn't know what the pandemic would bring, what challenges it might face, we might face because of it, and how much of your time and the town's time it would consume. And you and your team just championed it so incredibly well that I agree with Mr. Ren. If I could give you a score above a five, I would have for this year. Despite the pandemic, each of your goals was accomplished on or ahead of schedule, and you did an outstanding job coordinating with the different departments, informing residents and protecting them during the pandemic, including rolling out vaccines when the state government allowed the towns to do that. So I really couldn't come up with anything that I would have asked for improvement this year. I think you did an outstanding job, and I thank you for it, and everyone on your team.
Thank you, Ms. LaLiberty. And as my fellow board members know, you know, this is one of the most significant roles we have as selectmen, and I take it very seriously. I do have prepared words. I'm hoping to read them all, but I sense that I might cut out a few, as I will explain later. But I have provided Mrs. Jacobson a copy of these comments so that she can follow along with me. But here I go. "After careful reflection on this past year and after thoughtful consideration of each component of our formal evaluation, I have decided to rate the Town Manager's performance as distinguished in all categories. This is not something I approach lightly. I have the highest standards and expectations for those given the opportunity to both leadership or managerial roles within our community. While facing a global pandemic, we've heard new terms like uncharted territory, the new normal, quarantine, essential worker, hybrid model, and more. Mrs. Jacobson, while ensuring she followed each and every executive order issued by the governor, led our town through one of the most challenging years a municipal leader could face. She did this with care and compassion, but also strength and professionalism while dealing with a wide range of issues. Mrs. Jacobson guided each and every board and commission through the challenges of remote meetings while still meeting the needs of every resident concerned, application, and hearing requirement. She faced HIPAA, personnel, union issues, resident frustration, and of course, public health, safety, and concerns. She hit them head-on and worked to address each stumbling block she faced. I truly believe the extensive work and long hours that went on behind the scenes by the Town Manager and her team to keep everyone safe and the town operational will never be known by all. As we have learned over the last 10 years, Mrs. Jacobson never takes the credit for herself and is the first one to recognize her leadership team and their staff. As Mrs. Jacobson knows, I've provided an evaluation for the nine years she's been evaluated since being hired as the town's first Town Manager 10 years ago. Rather than going through each item on the evaluation form for the past year, I've decided to highlight some of the key comments in each category I made over the past nine years." And I will say that I have at least three comments under each category, which will become part of the public record, but I'm going to just read one because I have five pages here. "Her relationship with the board. I found Mrs. Jacobson to be professional, polite, responsive, inclusive, helpful, and engaging as Town Manager in her dealings with me and this board. Under Town Administration, Mrs. Jacobson has a clear understanding of the town's charter, the town's bylaws, regulations and policies, Mass. General Law, Open Meeting Law, and the State Ethics Regulations. Under Budget and Finance, there is no denying that the Town of Auburn is in strong fiscal condition. Working with CFO Ed Casanovaich, the Town Manager is able to look at the big picture and long-range financial stability. Under Community Relations, I'm going to read a couple of them because I think it's important. Mrs. Jacobson is responsive to resident inquiries. She makes herself available for appointments with residents to address their concerns. The quarterly newsletter Code Red and public service announcements are all used to inform the public when needed. An additional comment was, it is rare in municipal government that positive feedback even outweighs negative feedback, which is a simple reflection of our human tendency to comment mostly on what needs to be fixed. But the opinions expressed to me of our Town Manager this year have been universally positive. Under Goals, we can mark completed. These goals were an enormous undertaking and done while still meeting the ongoing operations and administration of the town. Mrs. Jacobson met these goals, complex as they may be, head-on. I encourage all to review the detailed process and attachments in the report provided to us to see just what these were. Mrs. Jacobson is constantly setting new goals, pushing herself to achieve them. Never someone to rest on her laurels, she is skillfully and adeptly anticipating the next challenges that the town will have to tackle, and getting right down to work, inspiring our whole team of municipal employees right behind her. In closing, it has been my honor and my pleasure to serve on the Select Board for the last 12 years. I'm often asked about votes I've taken over these years. Tonight, I can say unequivocally that the vote I am most proud of was on January 10, 2011, when I voted yes to appoint Mrs. Jacobson as the town's first Town Manager. I remember former Chairman Hicks announcing at our January 31, 2011, meeting that Mrs. Jacobson had been sworn in that morning. There was no honeymoon period as Mrs. Jacobson was off and running with her vision for the Town of Auburn. Under our new charter, on April 4, 2011, she presented her reorganization plan to the Board of Selectmen and received unanimous support. On May 19, that plan became effective, and implementation of the plan began. She has never looked back, never slowed down since that January meeting. Every action, decision, contact, and contract has been made with the best interest of the town in mind. I want to thank my fellow board members who I have worked with over the years, who have recognized Mrs. Jacobson's distinguished work and made positive contributions to her growth and development. And their praise of Mrs. Jacobson's work can be heard, pride in our community, and recognition of how far we've come. I'm pleased that I've had the opportunity to grow into my role as a selectman, almost along with Mrs. Jacobson. I've had a unique perspective in writing her evaluation this year, as I've been contemplating my time in municipal government and reflecting on the positive change we have seen. As this is my final evaluation of Mrs. Jacobson, I will indulge in one preservative comment I made in a prior year as my final word on our Town Manager. "It is clear to me that what is emanating from the manager is more than just hard work. It's a positive can-do attitude that is permeating throughout the town. In Mrs. Jacobson, we have more than a manager, we have a leader. Only a true leader can inspire a community in quite the way she has." Respectfully submitted at the Auburn Board of Selectmen meeting, Chairman Doreen Goodrich. So I am, thank you, Mr. Ren. I am first going to open it up to Mrs. Jacobson, and then see if there's anyone else who wants to make a comment.
Thank you. Thank you all. It's always, well, I just want to thank you for your evaluation of my performance over the past year, which, as the chairman said, marks the 10th year that I just completed as being Town Manager. And I appreciate the support of each one of you throughout the year as we work collaboratively on behalf of our citizens, our residents, and our businesses, and all taxpayers here in Auburn. It really is an honor, has been an honor for 10 years, and I look forward to the continued honor to serve in this role. It's been a pleasure, and it's certainly been an interesting year when we look back at 2020. As you all know, and I say it every year, but a public evaluation process is really a humbling experience. So it really is helpful for board members to provide comments and feedback to me, as it really does give me an opportunity to address any concerns that you may have or give you any additional information that you think you need in order to make an evaluation. So I thank you for your feedback that you provided, as well as all the feedback that you gave me during the year. And I'm grateful to those members who gave me perfect scores this year and recognized my desire to achieve perfection, even during a global pandemic. Can't let that get in the way. And I do look forward to having a conversation with Mr. Carpenter to better understand his scores as well, and hopefully to be able to provide information that he feels he may need. This past year has been especially challenging due to the COVID pandemic and all of its related impacts on Town Administration. From the beginning of the pandemic, as all of you have mentioned, our entire team developed and implemented numerous measures to curb the spread of COVID-19 in our community and to try to minimize its impacts on our residents and businesses. And who would have thought we'd be here more than a year later, still dealing with the same issues? The battle to curb the spread of the pandemic continues today. I assume it's going to continue throughout the remainder of 2021. But the impact of this virus has been significant, and it will continue to be significant. Its impact on Town Administration has also been significant, and I'm really proud that we've all been able to work together to adapt our operations, to be able to provide the essential and important services to our community. And I'm really proud of the accomplishments that Town Administration made over the past year, including the outstanding efforts to keep the Auburn community informed, educated, and safe during this pandemic. These accomplishments were achieved while battling COVID-19, and I use that word battling because that's what we're all doing, and its enormous impacts on the administration and the operations of Town Administration and our community as a whole. I'm proud to not only have met, but exceeded the goals that the Select Board set for me in 2020, as Mr. Will Liberty said, "Who knew at that time what we were going to be faced with in the coming months?" While the Select Board has my self-evaluation report, I just want to highlight a few of those accomplishments over the past year. Again, not because they're my accomplishments, they're our accomplishments. And they're our accomplishments because of all the department heads, the division heads, the employees in every department, and the Select Board and your guidance. It is all of us. It takes all of us to get this done. But just a couple of things that I think a few of you already mentioned, but I think it's important for the public. It was one of my goals was to get ready to close on Mary G. Stone, and I'm so proud that we actually did close on the Mary G. Stone School. And we worked throughout the year with the developer to secure the financing and facilitate the redevelopment into 55 units of affordable senior housing. Construction started last July. As you've seen, it's well underway. We also were able to close on the sale of the Julia Bancroft School, which was done several months early than we anticipated. And again, we've been working and continue to work with the developer to secure financing to redevelop this property into 60 units of affordable housing for seniors. Combined, these two projects are going to total about $40 million of investment into Auburn, and it's going to benefit the residents of this community for decades to come. We were able to secure the necessary Town Meeting votes and complete the right-of-way process in an expedited manner, actually by June 30, in order to enable the state to move the Auburn Street reconstruction project up by one year. Again, that was a goal of the board, to get ready for it. Not only did we get ready, but we did it. And I want to thank everybody who was involved in that. It involved Bill Coyle, our DBW Director, I'll mention our employees after, but it's amazing the work that went into that one goal. It was a daily occurrence. Every single day, we had something to do. Because we were able to move our project up, first of all, we were able to move it up because another community couldn't get it done in time. So a slot opened up, and we were able to meet all the criteria that the state gave us and get this done a year in advance. Because of that, the project started last summer, and because of that, we were able to secure another $700,000 that we were not initially planning to get. So that was an enormous success for us, and I'm proud of everybody who worked on that. We secured grant funding and undertook and then completed the town's first-ever ADA transition plan. That was another one of my goals, and very proud that we met it. And I would say that we exceeded it because we went beyond the state requirements to do a really comprehensive report on all town and school properties so that we can start working toward making them ADA accessible for our community. We created the Auburn Cares and Our Seniors Matter program during the pandemic, and we made telephone calls directly to almost 5,000 seniors with the help of the school department and all of our town employees. So that was a great effort and a joint effort of the school department and the town. We installed our drive-through kiosk, which is very popular. It's going to be hard at some point when we don't have that. Everyone loves it. But we have the drive-through kiosk and the outside service windows to provide the public with safe access to our employees and to the services that they're looking for. We developed and implemented a creative and safe plan to hold two Town Meetings in the midst of a pandemic, and we're about to have our third one in May. And in spite of the financial impacts of COVID-19, through thoughtful and targeted reductions, we were able to reduce the FY '21 budget to utilize 0% of Proposition 2.5, 0%. I don't know of any other community that's been able to do that, especially this year during the pandemic. And by budgeting well under the Prop. 2.5 limits since I've been here, working with Ed Casanovaich, our Assistant Town Manager and CFO, we've saved the taxpayers of this community $41.7 million in excess levy, excuse me, in non-tax levy. From January 20 to January 21, which is the period of my evaluation, it will be a little different for my report because I was able to update it in the last couple of weeks, but we applied for 52 grants in that year period. We received 39 of them, and it totaled $1.3 million just in this past year alone. We completed a $500,000 LED streetlight conversion and purchase program, and we secured the funding for and completed installation of a $525,000 regional fire training tower. So we were able to accomplish a lot even during COVID. And the reason I want to say all this is I just want to say these were made possible due to the strong management team and the work of all of our town employees. I am so fortunate and grateful to work with a professional and talented team of employees in each department, who are led by amazing department heads in each department, who are led by amazing department heads, managers, division heads, and supervisors. We've all been through a year like no other in our lifetime, and I hope no other will ever be in our lifetime again. And as I've told some of the managers, I want to let this board know what I say. If I had to navigate a boat through the uncharted waters of a global pandemic, then there's no team I'd rather do it with than this one. There's nobody I'd rather have in my boat than the people that work for the town of Auburn, our department heads and our division heads. In my opinion, I also, similar to what Mr. Ren said, I would score them a 10 out of five. They're just tremendous. So I know there's no time to thank every employee, but I do want to just recognize a few of the executive management team. I think it's really important because, again, none of this would be possible if it wasn't for all of this team. But I really want to recognize Ed Kaczynowicz, the Assistant Town Manager and CFO, who is, he is just outstanding. I can't say enough about Ed. If I were reviewing Ed, he'd also get a 10. He just does a phenomenal job and makes everything possible. Fire Chief Steve Coleman, again, words can't say what a tremendous job he does as fire chief. Bill Coyle, our GPW director and town engineer, again, the Auburn Street Project. Look at all the work that goes on around town, and Bill Coyle is to thank for all of that. He has a lot on his plate, and he manages it really well. Jolene Coyle, our Director of Development, Inspection Services, and our Director of Public Health, probably had the worst year of her professional life, given the COVID, but she was ready for it. She's trained, she's passionate, she's enthusiastic, and she's getting us all through it. She's keeping everybody safe. Police Chief Andrew Silikus does an outstanding job. I want to thank him and his department for working with us through a lot of the changes that we had to implement during the year because of COVID. Mike Marino, who's our Director of Information Technology, no one knows what goes on behind the scenes. It's like the Wizard of Oz behind the curtain, right? What goes on behind the scenes with the IT department? But Mike manages so many different things and keeps us all safe through cybersecurity. And Eric Odison, our Emergency Management Director. So I just want to say, working with these department heads is a true pleasure. I'll just take one more minute of the board's time just to say that I want to thank and recognize all the assistant department heads and division head work. Jean Billett, Jean Collins, Amy Conroyce, Eileen Alexander, Deb Dubois, Ken Fairbanks, Chris Hugo, Adam Menard, Caleb Moody, Marian Murphy, Kristen Pappas, Joanna Paquin, Shannon Regan, Kate Spanos, Lisa Targonsky, and Seth Willard, as well as elected town clerk and friend, Deb Greenwell. And I want to acknowledge and thank the people in my office and in yours, the Board of Selectmen, Sharon, Sue, and Rachel. They just do an outstanding job. So together, we've all navigated this unprecedented health crisis while continuing to provide continuity of operations to the public. So I want to thank and acknowledge also the board members, board and commission members, and the volunteers in this community who make it all possible. And I just think that all of us together make a great team, and it starts with the leadership from the board. So I thank you all. I thank you for establishing the goals, for supporting all of us, and for your really kind comments this evening. You just made my day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. And I am aware that we do have a full agenda, but I also know that this is a very important evening. Again, one of the most significant things that the Board of Selectmen will do, and I don't want to put them on the spot because we haven't spoken, but I know Mr. Kaczynowicz is on the call, who generally will say something, and I see Chief Coleman is on the call. I'm not seeing any other department heads. Mrs. Worsbicki may want to say just a word on behalf of the school department, but Ed, did you want to say anything?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I apologize for tuning in late. It was my future son-in-law's birthday today, so I had to stop by and wish him well. So I'm sure the board was very complimentary in Julie's performance, because I can tell you, as a team management, from the team management perspective, Julie just does an outstanding job. I don't know anyone with a work ethic like hers. She, from sunrise to sunset, she's always focused on business at hand. She's a true professional, and like a good manager, she's giving everyone else credit when today should be about her. Julie is just, she's the best. She's a great town manager. We're lucky to have her. Her work speaks for itself. She rises to the occasion. She performs like no other manager I've ever known. So Julie, I want to thank you on behalf of everyone else. I'm looking forward to working with you the next couple of years. We still have a lot to do. There's a lot that's still undone, but you should take credit for all that you've done, all the hard work. And I know this has been a difficult year and a half through COVID, and it's really, I think it's put pressure on you to deliver and perform above and beyond the normal day-to-day things that you have to get done. This was really a pressure point that was placed upon you and your entire team. So I know everyone's been working hard, but congratulations. Once again, you've done a great job, and we're all proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. I'm going to turn to Chief Coleman next. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. When you said earlier that 10 years ago, the town manager jumped right in, I don't think people realize exactly how quickly she jumped in, and this is something, you know, we've kind of talked about internally. But if you remember back 10 years ago, the town manager was only on the job a few days, and we had 11 roof collapses in a period of within a week, and that was the town manager's first week in Auburn. And I can remember, it was probably day three. We hadn't even met in person yet, and we were driving down the road, and she went to say something to me, and she paused, and she said, "I'm sorry, what's your name again?" So when you say that the town manager was literally thrown into it within her first week, I think some people forget how true that is. But since the day she got here, you know, dealing with those incidents and over the past decade, and I'll be coming up on 10 years as well next month, because Julie appointed me the permanent chief in May of 2011. And it's just been an honor and a pleasure to work with her. I think one of the things that makes her such a great leader is that she has a tremendous amount of faith in her department heads, and she lets us do our jobs. And that, I think, says more about her leadership and her management ability, because a lot of leaders and managers don't know how to do that. And the fact that she has faith and trust in her department heads to allow us to manage our departments and navigate our day-to-day, but we all know that if we need assistance and when we need help, which we all do on occasion, she's a phone call away. And whether she picks up or not, and whether it's, you know, 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock at night, she will get back to you and, you know, to make sure. And that's, I think that's a tremendous load off of department heads, just knowing that we have a leader that we can count on. So congratulations, Julie. Those scores, those fives across the board are well-deserved, and on behalf of the rest of the department heads, you know, we congratulate you on this great review and look forward to continuing working with you. Thank you.
And Ms. Worsbicki, did you want to say something on behalf of the school department?
Sure. Thank you for acknowledging us, the school department. We're extremely thankful for the partnership that we share and the support we receive from the town under the leadership of Mrs. Jacobson, and it's a pleasure working with her. I've worked with her for the past seven years, between her and CFO Kaczynowicz. They're very great to work with, and they're extremely supportive of us and our needs. And we, you know, we feel like we're a real team working together, so we're very thankful for that partnership. So thank you.
Thank you. And I do see several other town employees on the call, and I do appreciate everyone being on the call, but I am going to just limit it tonight to department heads. So I do see Mr. Coyle, and again, another true team player here. Mr. Coyle, if you want to say a few words, thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to thank Julie for her leadership, especially over this past year during the pandemic. I can say Julie's leadership is always encouraging all of us to do our best. Her enthusiasm, her energy level, and her drive to always do more. She constantly challenges us all and makes us always want to accomplish more as well. So I thank her for that. She's always very accessible for all of us, as is Ed as well. We work great together as a team, all of us, and if there's anything, we have a need as a department, they're always right there to help us and to listen to us. So I think it creates a great team of leadership, and under Julie's direction, I think we've accomplished a lot. And a lot of that, I can say, is definitely because of her level to succeed. And she's always there to say, "There's another grant." And we get the email, and sometimes you just want to say, "Not another grant," but it's because of her always pushing that we do keep achieving more. So I do want to thank her for her leadership, and it's a pleasure to work for her, and I can tell you that I speak for all the DPW employees when I say that. So thank you, Julie.
And I thank everyone for their comments tonight. It is an important evening for the town manager, and I appreciate everything. We do have a full agenda tonight. We are going to, for those of you on the call, we are aware of the agenda and the people who are on the call, and we are going to be moving agenda items up. But the first agenda item I'd like to move up is Agenda Item 5C, which is the appointment of the town accountant. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Bertheum and a second by Mr. Ren by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So our agenda item is the appointment of Town Accountant Thomas Zedelis. And Mrs. Jacobson, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. And I just want to point out that Thomas Zedelis is on the call. He's participating on my screen. He's in the bottom-left corner there, the box, but they do move around a lot. So in keeping with the evaluation, truly, I think everybody understands how critical it is to have a solid financial team in place in order to keep the town strong. And I also hope that you all realize, because I say it a lot, but it's really critical to hire the right people, whether it's in the school department or on the municipal side. We have to make sure that we hire skilled, qualified, competent people for the jobs that we have. And certain jobs require even more technical skills than others. So I just want to point out that per the town charter, the town manager recommends to the Board of Selectmen the appointment of the town accountant. So for those of the public who may not realize this, Ed Kaczynowicz, who is our CFO and Assistant Town Manager, wears a third hat, and he is also our town accountant. And as a result, we've had several conversations with both this board and the Finance Committee. And as a result, this current fiscal year, back last May, we got approval for a budget for a town accountant's position, because we know that while Ed does a tremendous job, no one should have to wear three hats like he does. So we really need to have an excellent person to step in and take over the town accountant's role. And I'm here tonight to recommend to the Board of Selectmen, wholeheartedly supportive, that I recommend Tom Zedelis to be the town's next town accountant. Tom, it's hard for me to even say where to start, but I've known Tom for a number of years. I worked in the city of Worcester for many of the years that Tom worked in the city of Worcester. But if you look at Tom's resume, which is in your packet, it speaks for itself. Tom has so much experience. He most recently was the CFO in the city of Worcester. So he was overseeing the exact same types of departments, personnel, and had the same rules and responsibilities that Ed currently has now for the town of Auburn. Tom had it for the city of Worcester. He managed a budget that was over $500 million. He knows our systems. He knows municipal finance. He knows the operations. And fortunately for us, he's been our consultant that we hired a year ago when we found out that we were getting CARES dollars, and we knew how much paperwork and involvement that was going to be with the CARES Act dollars to make sure that we tracked every single penny and that we did it appropriately so that we would get reimbursement and not jeopardize any town funds in that. So we hired Tom. I'm proud to say, we were the first ones that reached out to Tom after he left the city and said, "Would you work for us as a consultant on our CARES Act?" Because we knew there was no training. We knew Tom could walk right in. He knew FEMA, he knew MIMA, he knew all of the rules and regulations. He knows everybody at the state level, and he's been working with all of our department heads for the last year on the CARES Act. So he's very familiar with the town of Auburn. I think another nice benefit is Tom, as the CFO in the city of Worcester, worked with the same bond rating analysts at Standard and Poor's and Moody's that Auburn works with. They're assigned geographically, so we have the same teams. So Tom is very familiar with the bond rating analysts that we work, because he worked with them as well. Likewise, we have the same financial advisors at Unibank that the city of Worcester has. So we have the same people that we need to work with, the same groups, the same professionals that Tom already knows. So immediately, Tom can step into this role and get the job done. I'm going to mention that it's in your packet. We are recommending that we hire Tom to start anyway 20 hours a week and allowing him, he still has a lot of other consulting jobs that he does for other communities through a consulting firm. He can do in 20 hours a week what we could never get anyone to do who was green at this and knew at this in 80 hours a week. Tom knows it, he can do it, and he's going to be a tremendous help to Ed. So with that said, I want to turn to Ed, because the town accountant would be a direct report to the CFO at Kaczynowicz. So I wanted to, I don't want to speak to Ed, I want Ed to speak on this as well.
Mr. Kaczynowicz?
Thank you, Julie. As I'm looking at the dashboard, Tom may be on your left, but Tom is on my right. So how you doing, Tom? So I feel like this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I feel like, you know, we're in the, we have the first pick in the drafts. That's how important this decision is, and we have a winner here. I, along with the town manager, highly recommend Tom as Auburn's next town accountant, because he brings with him 27-plus years of municipal experience. As Julian indicated, the last 12 as Worcester's chief financial officer. And prior to that, he also served as a city treasurer, having experience in all aspects of accounting, budget collection, and management of investments. Tom is well-known and highly regarded and respected in the financial field. I've had the pleasure of working with Tom during my career, especially over the past year, in dealing with accounting and distribution of COVID, federal CARES Act, and FEMA funding. And I know firsthand the talent and the accounting knowledge he can bring to the town of Auburn. The town will be fortunate to make Tom a part of its financial team, and would encourage all board members to accept the town manager's recommendation to appoint Tom Zedelis as Auburn's next town accountant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynowicz. Do any members have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Carpenter?
I just wanted to say that I'm going to enthusiastically vote for Mr. Zedelis, and I'm grateful that someone of his caliber is willing to come to Auburn. And as a point of personal privilege, as people talk about 10-year anniversaries, I understand Mr. Kaczynowicz is rounding his 26th year as town accountant. So congratulations, Ed, on finally graduating out of the role, and we've been fortunate to have you as long as we have, but I'm glad to see that we are adding someone to the bench that can not only assist you, but take some of the load off of your shoulders.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. I do appreciate those comments, and certainly Tom can step in and hit the ground running. He's seen it all, especially in the city of Worcester. So we look forward to taking him on board.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Zedelis, I am going to open it up for a comment from you after we take our vote. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion of the Board of Selectmen acting on the recommendation of the town manager pursuant to the amended town charter, Section 3.06, appoint Mr. Thomas F. Zedelis as town accountant of the town of Auburn effective May 1, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Liberty and a second by Mr. Carpenter by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman La Liberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Is there an additional motion?
I'll also make a motion of the Board of Selectmen authorize pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108N, an employment agreement between Thomas F. Zedelis and the town of Auburn for the uh, an employment agreement between Thomas Z, uh, Thomas F. Zedellis and the town of Auburn for the position of town accountant, subject to the following conditions, the salary for which such position shall be set by the town manager in accordance with town charter, section 3.06. Uh, the evaluation of the town accountant shall be done by the town manager or by the chief financial officer. The town accountant shall report to the town manager and to the chief financial officer in accordance with the 2011 reorganization plan of the town of Auburn. And that the town manager shall negotiate the employment agreement for the board of selectmen in accordance with this motion, subject to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108 N, and Section 3.06 of the town charter.
Is there a second? Was that Mr. Ren?
Yes.
We have a motion by Mr. Liberty and a second by Mr. Ren, but by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman La Liberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Welcome aboard, Mr. Zedellis. And, um, would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first, I'd like to thank, um, Julie, uh, Town Manager Jacobson, Assistant Town Manager Kuzinovich, um, the, the fire chief, the police, uh, and the deputy fire chief, who I've worked extensively with for the last year, as well as, uh, the school business manager. But, um, quite simply put, how do I follow what I just saw relative to well-deserved accolades, um, that were bestowed upon the, the manager? So there's quite honestly, nothing I can say, but I'm glad to be aboard in the town of Auburn.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Julie.
I was just gonna say, through the chair, I just want to, uh, thank the board of selectmen. I think you just made a tremendous vote. Uh, I think it's a really important vote. I know Eddie's gonna breathe a huge sigh of relief, uh, knowing that we have Tom coming in. And I just want to welcome, officially welcome Tom to our team. Uh, again, we have a great team and Tom's gonna fit right in. It's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be great. Thank you. And I would say a few of the department heads will tease and say that I've sent several of them to a, um, to a heart specialist, actually. I don't have high blood pressure, but rumor has it, a number of the department heads have high blood pressure. So they wanted me to put, uh, the, the heart doctor's business card in the new welcome employee packet. But I think I'm gonna pass on that and just say that, uh, it's a great team and I'm sure you're gonna remain very healthy.
Thank you. And Mr. Zedellis, you're welcome to stay on the call for a little bit. Um, moving on to the agenda, I do want to acknowledge again that we have multiple, um, multiple hearings and, um, items that people are on the call for. This was an important evening for the town manager. Um, I wanted to be here to show my support. And I also wanted to be here to vote, um, in, in support of Mrs. Zedellis joining the leadership team. But unfortunately, um, as I have informed Vice Chairman La Liberty, that I do have a, um, a family emergency and I must leave the call now. And I am going to turn the meeting over to, um, Vice Chairman La Liberty. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Terry. Okay. So, uh, I guess we'll just continue with on with the regular agenda. So we'll go back to agenda item 3A, uh, which is a change of manager for Century Sportsman's Club at, uh, 531 Rochelle Street. And I'll entertain a motion to open the hearing. Um, is someone available, actually, should do that first, uh, from Century Sportsman's? A representative available?
Yes, Frank Hye, Treasurer, Century Sportsman's Club. I'm on the call.
Okay, great. Um, so I'll entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Mr. Berthium and seconded in by Mr. Ren, uh, by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And a vice chair votes yes. So we closed, we have the application documents and a notice from the police chief that he has no objection to the change of manager. Board members have any comment, questions? Seeing none, okay. Um, so I'll turn things over to, uh, the representative from Century Sportsman to tell us a little bit about the, uh, change of manager.
Sure. Um, our previous manager stepped down for health reasons. Um, and one of our other members stepped up. Um, he owns a package store in Worcester, so he's, um, well-versed in, in all the laws and all the regulations and everything that he needs to know to fulfill his duties. Um, and I think, you know, you've got a complete package there with all of his information. I don't know if there's anything else I can add. Uh, if there is, ask me specifically.
Uh, do board members have any questions?
Uh, yeah, to the chair, generally isn't, usually the manager does appear for this hearing. I understand that why they weren't able to with a canceled flight and whatnot. Um, but in my research, I mean, I did see that there was an issue with a sting in the past. I mean, I, I like the fact that you did, in fact, that he, that he knows all the, the laws and he's updated in terms of serving and checking IDs. Is there any chance that we'll be able to appear in the future if we conditionally approve this or?
I'm sure he, I'm sure he'd be happy to. Um, I spoke with him early this morning. He was very apologetic. He was in Florida and his flight got canceled and he was scrambling to find a flight home. And he wasn't sure where he would be, um, at 6 o'clock this evening for this hearing. So he asked me to, um, look up then. But if, if you guys would like to, um, talk to him, um, one-on-one, I'm sure that can be arranged.
All right. Uh, if it is the, the pleasure of the board, we can, um, postpone until our next meeting. Um, when the representative would be available, uh, as of the board. Do any other members have additional questions or comments? Seeing none. All right. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing. Uh, no, to, uh, yeah, to close the hearing.
Mr. Chair, do we want to pull the board to see what they want to do in that Mr. Ren has reservations? If we close the hearing now, we wouldn't be able to take testimony of the manager.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Um, so how, what are members' thoughts on, uh, continuing this onto our, leaving the, the hearing open, continuing to our next meeting? Um, I have no preference. I'm personally okay with approving the questions now. Um, but if board members agree with Mr. Ren.
Like I said, it was a reservation. It's not a hill I'm willing to die on. It, again, the paperwork was in order. And I, I do like the background of this applicant as manager. So it, it was just, we're not fitting the mold of the way this is, has been done in the past. So that was my only reservation. But again, not, not, if we're gonna grade it, it's not a major reservation.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
All right. Um, motion to close hearings been made by Mr. Carpenter. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Berthium by a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. Uh, so now I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, or deny the change in manager.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the change of manager to Elias Xena.
All right. Mr. Carpenter has made him up. A second by Mr. Berthium, uh, by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. All right, thank you. Oh, my God. All right. I'm sorry, I have it on a second screen here. Would have picked up the papers, but no. Usually I have it on one computer, but it wasn't gonna work. Um, okay, we have a motor vehicle class two license from Papa Auto LLC. Um, so we need a, do we have a representative present?
Yes, Mohammed.
Right. Uh, can you please give your name and address for the record?
Mohammed Mashawi, 135 Crescent Street, Shrewsbury, Mass. 01545.
All right, thank you. Uh, we have a motion to open the hearing.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Ren, seconded by Mr. Berthium by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. All right, uh, so, uh, from the applicant, um, I'll turn it over to you for any, uh, comments or, uh, what you want to tell us about the application.
For me, it's no comments. Uh, just, you know, moving from Worcester to, uh, town of Auburn, uh, to, uh, uh, got a bigger space and to make my business larger. Um, hopefully we do it in Auburn, you know, uh, as I am, if I'm approved.
All right. Uh, I'll turn it over to board members for any questions or comments. All right. Seeing none. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Uh, motion been made, motion been made by Mr. Berthium, seconded by Mr. Carpenter, uh, by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. Um, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny the license.
I'll make a motion to approve the license for a motor vehicle class two license for Papa Auto LLC at 317A Southford Street in Auburn.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. Uh, do we want to, uh, read the, the, the regular provisions and, and add that to the end?
I would say we have a standard, we have a standard, we have a standard motion, so we should make the standard motion.
Mr. Ren, would you amend your motion?
Uh, yes. Uh, so to approve the Papa Auto LLC license, uh, provided that all the requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, commissions have been fulfilled. Uh, said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. If they comply with any and all conditions, shall invalidate the license and render it null and void. And with the conditions recommended by the DCG to be placed on the license.
Mr. Berthium, do you second? Yeah. All right. Motion's been made by Mr. Ren, seconded by Mr. Berthium by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. Uh, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much. Thanks, you all.
All right. Communications are none. Okay. Uh, moving on to agenda item 5A, change of corporate name license for Jay Anthony's. Is the representative on the call?
Yes, Jason Velodico.
Thank you. Um, I'll turn it over to you for any comments on the application.
Uh, we're just changing of the corporate name from the old, uh, structure, Periwinkle's Pub Restaurant Inc. to Jay Anthony's Italian Grill Incorporated.
All right. Um, do board members have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny the change of corporate name.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the change of corporate name to Jay Anthony's Department of Urban Lounge Inc. as requested.
I'll second that.
Motion been made by Mr. Carpenter and seconded by Mr. Berthium. Do you approve the name change, uh, by a roll call vote? Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. All right, thank you. All right. On, again, item 5B, change of owner. Sorry. Oh, I see. Um. Um, at this time, I'd ask the board to consider moving up agenda item 5H, uh, the housing authority.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion been made by Mr. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Berthium, uh, by a roll call vote. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. Um, all right, agenda item 5H, vote and acceptance of 2021 capital fund program amendment. At this point, I'll, is there a representative from the Auburn Housing Authority?
Yes.
All right. Uh, at this point, I'll turn things over to you. Give us some information on the amendment. Let the board members have it in their packets. All right. Sorry, I'm gonna try to pull mine up here, too. All right, there you go. Do board members have any questions or comments about the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, through you to the town manager, I would just, this is a pro forma thing that we sign because we're required to by some trick of law. And I know last year we asked for the language to be put in that way. We are signing this as a matter of law, but we are not in any way attesting to it. So I, I would be perfectly content with the, the same situation this year in that, um, they are not subject to the town charter and they are not subject to the board.
Mr. Carpenter, you're, you're correct. I'm sorry if you were directing that to me. Um, you're correct. Uh, the board is required to sign this under Mass General Law. And it is one of those quirky laws in that the board is required to sign it and HUD requires the board to sign it. But yet the board doesn't have any oversight over it. So, uh, you are correct. I believe you had certain language that we can put in again. And also I should just make a mention through the chair that this board last year asked us to draft and send a letter to the local delegation, asking them to potentially revise Mass General Law to remove this requirement. Uh, so we did send that letter along to our local legislative delegation. I don't know if anything was filed, but, uh, we did make the request and we can follow up on it again this year.
Uh, so if it's, uh, the boards, which would probably may add a motion to, uh, to follow up on that. Because I'm at least curious to see if anything was filed or if there's any, um, chance that we might not have to go through this weird, phase again where it comes through us, even though we really don't have any say over it. So I'm perfectly happy adding that as a stipulation again this year. But do any other board members have questions or comments? All right. Seeing none. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, would you like to, uh, turn that into a motion?
Uh, I, I will, Mr. Chairman. I would make a motion that we vote to accept and approve and authorize the capital fund program amendment, housing and urban development formula grant to carry out work activities identified in the Public Housing Authority's five-year capital action plan. Adding that this is done as a matter of law, that the board is not in any way attesting to the plan as presented or that the funds are being carried out per any sort of program. We are taking no responsibility other than moving this along and leaving it to the, uh, housing authority members to, uh, govern their, their department.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Carpenter and seconded by Mr. Berthium. Uh, Sharon, did you get the full motion? Uh, Sharon, did you get the full motion?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. So by roll call vote, Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, I, I very much apologize. My name is T. Roberts. I, I think you called item five B, the change of ownership. I had an internet problem. If you did call that, I was unable to respond at the time. Am I correct that you did call that?
Uh, we did.
I apologize. I, as I say, I had a momentary internet problem, but I think that's resolved now if.
That's alright, we, we moved up another motion, so you're, it actually worked out perfectly. But we didn't actually go to it or take any action on it. And that's next in line, anyway. Um, so I guess moving on to change of owner for LLC Friendly's, uh, it looks like it was typo, two thousand and three at six ninety-seven Southbridge Street?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um, can you please read your name and address for the record?
Absolutely. My name is T., that's T.E.E., last name is Roberts. Um, my address is seventeen Hale Road, H.A.L.E. in Winchester, New Hampshire, oh, three, four, seven, zero. And I work for Friendly Ice Cream.
Alright, uh, I'll turn things over to you to tell us about the, uh, application.
Certainly. Uh, Friendly's has been operating in Auburn for many, many years. Uh, this is a change of ownership. We were acquired by, um, Amici Foods, and we are now called Friendly's Restaurants Company LLC. Uh, nothing has changed in terms of menu building, equipment, or anything else. It's, it's literally just a change of ownership. And so we wanted to reapply license, uh, under the new company name.
Alright, uh, do board members have any questions or comments?
Mr. Mr. Vice Chair? Um, the only thing I, I noticed that in the, uh, agenda packet, uh, and then also further down, uh, in the agenda, it is referred to as Friendly's two with three zeros and then a three. Um, so we want to make sure that, that we get that LLC name right. Uh, could, um, Ms. Roberts, give us exactly the name of, of what she's looking to do?
Certainly. Um, when the company bought this co- the Friendly's, they renumbered all of our stores. So initially under the old company, it was number zero, zero, three. So they have just changed the store number to be two, zero, 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 three. Um, that's more of an internal designation. Um, most people just know it as Friendly's, but that is an intern, they did renumber all of our restaurants. So if you want exact for the record, it would be two, zero, 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 three. I apologize, I didn't notice that it was listed differently.
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, make sure that that was correct. I did see it more than once in our packet. Thank you.
Yep, yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Alright, uh, do any other board members have any comments or questions?
I would just suggest, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, we approve it conditional to a application that reflects the correct LLC. Being to, being submitted to the office.
Alright, uh, do you want to make that in the form of a motion?
I will make it in the form of motion that we are approving this subject to a corrected application being submitted to the town manager's office by the applicant. In that, uh, we are approving the change of owner for the common eviction license at six ninety-seven Southwood Street, Auburn, Mass. To Friendly's two, zero, 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 three.
Alright, motion been made by Mr. Carpenter. Car- motion been made by, or Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Ren. By a roll call vote, Mr. Ren?
Mr. Mr. Vice Chair, I have a comment on that. Um, I believe the application is correct with the two, zero, 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 three. That's why I was just making sure because you had mentioned, uh, in, in your initial, uh, speech that, um, that it was two thousand and three. But it, it does on the application, I believe, say Friendly's two with three zeros and a three, so, um, I think we can approve it as, as, uh, as written.
Okay, so what I'm looking at is business organization name on the Department of Industrial Accidents. It says Friendly's Restaurants Company LLC. So, and on the certificate of liability, it also has Friendly's Restaurants Company LLC, AKA Amiki Partners Operating LLC, so. I agree with Mr. Berthium, it is on the front, but the supporting documentation isn't consistent, so I would say that, in that we are hearing from Mrs. or Ms. Roberts, that, uh, this is the correct name, then it's a simple enough thing to fill out. The application.
Okay, I, I see that and agree with that. Thank you.
Alright, I can have those changes made.
Okay, great. So, um, the motion was made by Mr. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Ren, uh, by a roll call vote, Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. Thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Five B. Isn't there agenda items five C? Uh, let's see if there's anything else we should. Alright, I think that's it. So we can move on to agenda item five D, uh, which is seems to what everyone is on the call for. Um, I'm sorry, let me get back to it. So is the, uh, vote to recommend warrant articles, um, for approval, not recommend, to defer, uh, or take no position at this time. I know in the past, we've held off, uh, on making recommendations, uh, when we've had time, if there wasn't a full board, um, so that everyone would be able to comment on the motions. Uh, since that's the case tonight, uh, I, if the board would be in favor of holding off on voting to recommend approval or not recommend, I would certainly support that, but I'll leave it up to the board if any members have any, uh, preferences either way.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would happily wait, uh, for a full board, but I, I do think if anybody has any questions, seems that we've inconvenienced the, uh, town staff, that if we have any questions, that I wouldn't, personally, I wouldn't expect them to come back, um, to, to ask questions. They're here now. So if we have any questions, we should, uh, avail ourselves of that opportunity.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. So, remember, if any comments, if not, we can go right into it. As soon as I pull it up. Here we go. On this committee. Uh, would board members prefer to uh, go article by article, it doesn't, or ask any general questions about articles, um, to the department heads that we have present here? I think going article by article would probably take up too much time since we're not going to vote, uh, on, uh, approval tonight. Uh, so I think if board members have specific questions, if they could address them to the, um, appropriate department head, that might go a little bit better.
Mr. Chairman, I just believe I just have two questions, um, on articles twelve, thirteen, and, and fourteen, so I guess I, I lied. I have three questions potentially. So through you to the town manager or CFO, Casanovaich, I was watching finance last week and I saw that there was some uncertainty about article twelve, so I just kind of wanted to know if that has been resolved, or if this is going forward for the, uh, annual town meeting.
So I'll take that question, uh, through the chair to Mr. Carpenter. As it stands now, we currently do not have five hundred thousand dollars to appropriate into the OPEB. Although, right now, if things stay the way they are, we would be seeking a postponement of that warrant article until the fall town meeting. The only reason we kept it on the warrant is because there is a hint by both the House and the state legislature that they are considering some additional funding in the form of chapter seventy, in the amount of about two hundred and nineteen million dollars. What that means for Auburn, we don't know, but certainly that could offer an opportunity to supplant some of the tax levy money that we have earmarked in the FY twenty-two budget and cover that through chapter seventy funds. So I honestly believe that we will not have a number at the time to go to town meeting, uh, but certainly didn't want to eliminate that potential consideration if a number was released by, by, by the House in advance of town meeting.
Okay, so, so we're still waiting, but it looks, it looks like it won't go forward, uh, for annual. Is that what I hear?
That would be my guess, yes.
Okay, thank you. On article thirteen, um, the Medicaid receipts, I know these go up and down every, every year, so has this been? I know there's some uncertainty as to the school budgets, uh, because of enrollment and other issues. Is this level funded from last year? Did they agree to level fund it this year? Do we know we're getting the hundred and fifty, or this is just going off the governor's numbers still?
The one fifty, I could speak to that if you want. Um, the one fifty that we get for the Medicaid is what we appropriate. It's money that's usually, comes in the year before for services that have already been provided. Um, it's been one fifty since last year. We had gone down. We were originally, uh, previously up at two hundred thousand, but we weren't getting the, they made some, um, changes in the calculations for the Medicaid formulas, so there was a reduction across the state. All, all districts saw a reduction. So we felt it was fair to reduce it to the one fifty. We came close to that last year and we're hoping to make the one fifty this year. So that was where we were just trying to be conservative on our approach. Felt like two hundred thousand was way too much, so the one fifty we felt was more reasonable and more attainable, so that's basically, but it's the Medicaid receipts that they come into the town, um, and they go into the town general fund, and then the town reappropriates them for the school department to spend on, um, special education and medical expenses for students.
Yes, yeah, thank you for that. No, I was just wondering about the number, Ms. Wordsbick, not. It, it was just idle curiosity, shall we say, because I know there's some uncertainty with, uh, where we're at at the moment. And just article fourteen, I don't see a dollar amount, so I didn't know if that, if we have a dollar amount for article fourteen for the interest.
Yes, and working with CFO Casanovaich, um, we just spoke today and we were able to verify that there is an amount. We didn't have it at the finance committee meeting, but we do have an amount of twenty-two thousand, seventy dollars and sixty-four cents that's available in interest from the trust for the Pappas, for the high school.
Thank you for that, I, I.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and thank you to, uh, both finance folks.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Um, do you other board members have any questions for any of the, uh, town department heads? Or town employees? Seeing none, I have one thing that I just wanted to ask, um, the town manager, so it, uh, it comes up a couple times when we're talking about the, um, construction of the bridge, uh, for the library, and, um, I think I told you before how much I, I love the idea of this project and how, um, I think it'll turn out great. I just wanted to use this time to remind everyone to take the survey and ask you, um, how much longer they actually have to, um, to fill out the survey.
Uh, through the chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to, I see Adam Menard is on this call, uh, in case there are any questions on zoning, so I'm just gonna turn to him because he's really been managing that process, uh, with the survey. Adam?
Hi, yes, thank you. So, um, the survey will be open until May first. I'm kind of contemplating leaving it open a week longer to kind of let the town meeting members, they're not aware already, let them know about it. We've had about two hundred respondents so far. Um, great to get some more, um, but that, I think we'll have some good information coming out of that.
Great, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to hopefully remind anyone that we could, um, that might be watching to take it. I filled it out after our last one, uh, and it's really well done, and look forward to this project, so thank you both. Alright, um, so if it's, uh, the pleasure of the whole board, entertain a motion to table, um, actually recommending, uh, the articles before us for the warrant until we have a full board or, or our next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we table this to the, the next meeting. I, I will, I will not be there, but I am confident that the board members will do what they always do and, and make great recommendations to town meetings, so I, I will step out on this particular warrant, uh, because I'll be out of town.
Our next meeting would be, uh, April twenty-sixth, so if I'm reading that right, with my calendar. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Carpenter, actually, um, Mr. Carpenter, holding it back, when, when would our recommendations have to be in, because we could, I'm just trying to think if we wanted, uh, I know you said you'd be willing to wait. But our recommendations really don't have to be until, I'm sorry, uh, to town manager, do we send out our recommendations as part of the mailing to town meeting members?
Through the chair, if we have the board's recommendations, we would send it. If not, uh, we would likely hand it out in the form of either a document that evening, or just a verbal report.
Right, because I know, uh, in the past, we've given the verbal report. I didn't know if that was on top of sending it out with them. I'm perfectly okay with continuing that, Mr. Carpenter, if you want to be around, uh, when we take the vote, so it is a full board. You already indicated that you were fine, uh, not being here, so if that's the case, we can definitely put it on the agenda for, uh, our next meeting on April twenty-sixth. But if, if you would prefer us to hold it off, when, do we meet again before?
We won't be meeting before town meeting, I'm sorry. That's our drop-in deadline.
Yep, that is, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I was pulling up the calendar, trying to see. Okay, alright, well, I'm sorry. The motion's been made by Mr. Carpenter and seconded by, I believe, Mr. Berthium. So I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
The vice chair votes yes. Alright. Thank you, everyone, for being on for that. Uh, agenda item five E, gift acceptance in accordance with mass general law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three. Item five, E gift acceptance in accordance with Master General law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three K. We have fifty five, fifty dollars to fire rescue. Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we accept it with gratitude and again comment that we are very grateful that the family of a lost loved one thinks to. Have one of our town funds as a. As something that they would like to support in memory of themselves.
Second. Motion been made, Mister Carpenter, seconded by Mister Ren, by a roll call vote, Mister Ren.
Yes.
Mister Berthium.
Yes.
Mister Carpenter.
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. Five proclamations and recognitions, we have a request from a resident for a hundred birthday recognition. Find that in your packets. That is in line. Policy. Board members have any? Comments? I try to pull it up. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to a. Prove the recognition.
Mister Chairman, I would make that recommendation and through you to the town manager, can we arrange any flashing lights or sirens or any? For a hundred, I mean, I think a proclamation seems so. So minor for such a accomplishment.
Through the chair, we can certainly talk with all of you and see what we could do, we. We did recently have a a one hundredth birthday, but my understanding is that the parade was because that. One hundred year old was the recipient of the. The Boston Post Kane Award, so. We can certainly look into what we could do.
Through the chair. They have reached out to the fire department and asked if we would participate in some sort of. Drive by and I have told them that we would participate in that.
Great, thank you, Deputy Chief Johnson, I didn't realize that you were still on the call, I was going to reach out to you tomorrow, see if we could do something, thank you. Thank you for saying that, thanks, Mister Carpenter for asking.
Oh, thank you, that's great.
And I'll second this motion.
All right, motion been made by Mister Carpenter, seconded by Mister Berthium. Thank you, Deputy Johnson. So by roll call vote, Mister Ren?
Yes.
Mister Berthium?
Yes.
Mister Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. We also have a request for recognition for Children's Mental Health Week, May second to the eighth. We have the letter that the board sent in twenty nineteen. Since it's. All right, do board members have any comments or questions?
Mister Chairman. Typically, when when we get these, we we. We don't issue a proclamation. We might forward it, we might forward it to the school department because it is dealing with children.
I know that's typically been. Let's see, where was our, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time sifting through and finding our actual letter. To the town manager, was this? A, this is a regional. Recognition, right, this week isn't, it's not a statewide or national.
Correct, through the chair, so we we did put in your packet, so Mister Carpenter, you're correct, you don't generally, this doesn't really fall into your category of proclamation, so. Two years ago, a request from a different organization came in for a proclamation for the exact same. Recognition, it just came from a different organization and this board voted to send a letter of recognition. So this particular organization, P P A L, that's requesting it this time is actually located in Worcester. So this is more of a probably a a regional organization requesting it in recognition of this national week.
So I think. Approving a letter might be within our. Our policy. A lot of appreciation, congratulations for present to the group business and visuals of no significant events. Mister Carpenter, do you have any opposition to? Sending a letter to the organization, yeah, Mister Berthium.
I I would just add that I I agree with Mister Carpenter that, you know, I I think that. You know, we we can certainly advise to push this along toward the school department, but. You know, I I don't think we we need to fill our meetings with. Proclamations or letters for, you know, there's obviously a million great. Foundations, a million great. Themes for for weeks and. I'm certainly not belittling this, but I just don't think it's something that that this board should should make a habit of of. You know, recommending all the time, so. I I agree with Mister Carpenter in this one that we we forward it down to the the school department and they, if they wish to to do something, they can go ahead and do it.
I've seen Cecilia nodding her head along with that with that, so I'll let you say anything if you want.
Well, we'll take it out under advisement, if you forward that along, I will pass that along to Doctor Handfield and we'll get to the matter, so, thank you.
All right. With that, then I'll entertain a motion to forward it along.
Mister Chairman, I'll make that motion that we move this. This application to the school committee for their review and any action they wish to make.
I'll second that.
All right, motion been made by Mister Carpenter, seconded by Mister Berthium, by a roll call vote, Mister Ren?
Yes.
Mister Berthium?
Yes.
Mister Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. And with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to move up agenda item sixteen. For Deputy Johnson, because that's probably why he's still on the call.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mister Carpenter, seconded by Mister Berthium. By a roll call vote, Mister Ren?
Yes.
Mister Berthium?
Yeah.
Mister Carpenter?
Yes.
Vice chair votes yes, okay, so vote to authorize applications except or expend grant funds from the twenty twenty-one Commonwealth Security Trust Fund for police and fire.
Through the chair, thank you very much for taking this item up, because I'm going to turn to Deputy Chief Johnson in a minute just to explain what the fire department is doing, but this is a grant. That allows for each the police department and the fire department to apply for up to twenty thousand dollars. So the police department will be seeking. To submit the grant, which is due, I believe, April twenty-third, to purchase. Crash reconstruction investigation equipment and a drone that would be designed for outdoor. Searching for missing or lost persons and suspects, so they are working on that application right now and I'm going to turn to Deputy Chief Johnson for what the fire department is going to be doing.
I will, we're going to be applying for the same twenty thousand dollars and it will be towards portable radios for interoperability. There'll be tri-band radios, which is slightly different than what we have now, we're working on trying to outfit all of our officers. The leadership with these tri-band radios, which will allow us better communications with our neighboring towns and cities. Each radio is approximately eight thousand dollars, so that will get us two radios and then some equipment with it.
All right. Do board members have any questions or or comments on the grant?
Mister Chair, just a just a follow-up, which probably isn't necessary, but. These radios are compliant with our communication systems in town or are they specifically used for? Something else.
Nope, they would, they they work with our radio systems in town, they're just a more advanced radio that will give us a more flexibility.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do any other board members have any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, I just want to add that I'm always happy to see the town apply for any grants that are out there, we already talked about how the town manager sends them out to everyone as soon as she sees them, so I thank you both for. Finding this and applying for it and hopefully wish you the best of luck, with that, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the application.
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion that we authorize the application acceptance and expenditure of funds up to twenty thousand dollars. For the twenty twenty-one Commonwealth Security Trust Fund grant for police and fire rescue department as outlined.
All right, motion been made by Mister Carpenter, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mister Berthium, by a roll call vote, Mister Ren?
Yes.
Mister Berthium?
Yes.
Mister Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right. Moving back up to five G, I think is where we left off. This is a simple, is there anyone else? Terrain layer license. On this licensity, license fee has been granted license within the last five years. They're not required to be here. So I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the license subject to all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards and commissions. Have been fulfilled, said license subject to all conditions stated upon it, fit to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
Motion made by Mister Carpenter, seconded by Mister Berthium, by a roll call vote, Mister Ren?
Yes.
Mister Berthium?
Yes.
Mister Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. Five I. Okay, load to twenty twenty-one annual secondhand junky licensee renewals. So these will expire on April thirtieth. And we have the D C G recommendations included in the packet. Do your board members have any comments or questions, I'm trying to pull it up to a message. So I have nothing, do board members have any comments or questions or any? Anything to add, it doesn't seem like there's something.
Mister Chairman, just through you to the town manager, I don't see anything in opposition from D C G or any concerns raised by staff, so I'm going to assume that these are. Continue to follow and are cooperative as necessary with our town departments.
Mister Carpenter, you're correct, if D C G had a concern, we would bring that to you, these are, these are generally just recommended from the sewer commission, so they actually vet the applications. And make the recommendation, so this is coming through the sewer superintendent and the sewer commission.
Those are the junk licenses, Julie.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay.
I'm sorry. So on the junk licenses that did to go to D C G last week and I, there were only three of them and. I apologize, I'm looking through my paperwork, for some reason, I I must have already put that one in the pile, Mister Carpenter. I I lost track of which item we were on, so I, if there was no D C G letter in there, then they didn't have a concern, but they usually do prepare a D C G letter. I know the D C G meeting actually was last Wednesday and that was on the item, that was on their agenda, so I I'm going to assume that there's no concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're welcome.
No, please. That's once in, that's once in seven, seven years, Julie, I think that's a good bad habit. Playing for the Red Sox, you'd be in the Hall of Fame already.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we that we approve the licenses. Subject to license renewals, provided that all applicable requirements of state and town and any of its departments, boards and commissions have been fulfilled. Said licenses subject to all conditions stated upon it, fit to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
All right, motion been made by Mister Carpenter, is there a second? Was that a second by Mister Ren, I didn't get on the line, okay, all right, by roll call vote, Mister Ren?
Yes.
Mister Berthium?
Yes.
Mister Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. All right. So vote to establish a subcommittee to revise the town manager evaluation form, this is something that we had talked about in the past, but we haven't. Made any moves to actually establish a subcommittee, I know we've talked about how there have been problems with it and could be a little bit more detailed, but I'll turn this over to the town manager, because I know we. We've talked about this in our meeting last week.
Through the chair, thank you, and I I just want to, if you don't mind, Mister Chairman, just to go back a second, Sharon, just let me know, because my, like I said, my pile is a little messy here of the items. That there was a D C G letter in there and there was no issues with the D C G on the prior item on the junk licenses, so. So we are all set on that, so on on this item, yes, the board has had a couple of discussions, most recently, I think of maybe one or two months ago. About revising the evaluation form. That's in the packet now, I know the conversation, I think, started back in January when we were talking about setting my goals for the coming year and I know the board talked about trying to come up with a a better evaluation form. And I think, I'm not sure who has said it, it might have been Mister Carpenter, so and I apologize, it might have been another member that, you know, after after ten years, you're probably asking. You'd be asking different questions than you would if it was if it was in my first or second year, so just taking a look at the evaluation form to see, number one, if it could be less cumbersome and number two. If we could look at how the everything is weighted, so for instance, in this case. All the, the first part of the form has four parts, each part has four or five questions, so you're talking about twenty or twenty-five different sections. And those sections are worth fifty percent and then the goals are worth fifty percent. So and, you know, thankfully, I've been able to meet all the goals, but if for some reason I wasn't, if the fifty percent. Weight on the goals really isn't, it isn't equal to the weight that's put on the rest of it, which is all the other things that we that I have to do all year, so. I believe the board mentioned at their meeting in January that they wanted to set up a subcommittee to work with me or work with each other and then work with me to hopefully make this a little less onerous of a process. Not just for me, I know you'll be proud, I cut my report down this year from fifty-five pages to maybe thirty-five pages, but it's a lot. And it's a lot for me to prepare and it's a lot for you all to read through, so I think we're all just trying to make the process a little bit more streamlined.
Thank you, Julie, I don't know if any other board members have any comments or if there's anyone that wants to serve on the subcommittee. But.
Would happily serve on the subcommittee and I do believe we would be working as a group as as well as with Mrs. Jacobson to come up with a reasonable. A reasonable. Review, that would be my hope anyways.
Mister Chair, I would also be happy to work with Mister Carpenter on that.
All right, so we have Mister Berthium and Mister Carpenter willing to serve on the committee. Can we get that in the form of a motion?
I'd make a motion that we establish a subcommittee to revise the town manager's evaluation form. Do you want two motions, one to create the committee and one to appoint? Do you want two motions, one to create the committee and one to appoint, Mr. Chairman, sorry?
Yeah, let's do, let's do it that way, so you're not putting yourself on the committee, even though we really doesn't matter to me. So there's a motion by Mr. Carpenter, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Berthium, by a roll call vote, Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. Now to establish the members of the committee.
And I would make a motion that we appoint Lionel Berthium and Daniel Carpenter to serve on behalf of the board.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Ren, by a roll call vote, Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. All right, thank you both. All right, and the last few agenda items, I have to apologize for the board. I did get a text after I had already finished talking with the housing authority, that there were two other motions that we could have had them on for, but I saw it a little too late, so. We have items six A and B to approve the ten-year lease for Twenty One Pheasant Court. I, I don't think that we need a representative for the housing authority to go over this. I think most, if any board members have questions, they could be answered by town administration. And that we should be able to take the motions as they are, or take the take the votes as they are. So do board members have questions or comments on either of these items?
Hi, yes, Mr. Vice Chair, I'm going to be recusing myself for item five B, as I'm the serving president of the sub less C on five B.
All right. And to the town manager, we don't, this doesn't require a four-person vote, right? This is a simple majority, so we should be fine to pass this, provided.
Correct. Under the, under the town charter, you need a vote of three members of the board to pass anything. So you would need to have all three members vote to support this for, in order for it to pass. And if I may, Mr. Chair, I'll just explain just more for the public, because I know everyone on this call understands, but the town of Auburn actually owns the building that Auburn Youth and Family Services is in. We lease the land that the building sits on from the Auburn Housing Authority. And that lease expires, and it's co-terminus, and same time as the lease that the town has with Auburn Youth and Family Services, that they then lease the building from us. So that's why you have both of these at the same time. The Sally Darkangelo, the executive director of Auburn Youth and Family Services, signed off on the, on her sublease. And the Auburn Housing Authority took a vote at its last meeting to support both leases. On the lease with the town, they have to take a vote to enter into the lease with the town. And on the sublease that the town has with Auburn Youth and Family Services, they're just voting to, basically to affirm that we are entering into that lease, since they are the landowner. The only change that I had in these leases this year, Ed Kuzinovich and I worked with town council and our insurance agent to just put some specific language with regard to the insurance requirements and the liability amounts. The last couple of leases, you know, from a couple of decades ago, didn't have any specific insurance amount, so we just wanted to make sure that we protected the town. So town council has reviewed this, and our insurance agent has reviewed it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Berthium?
No, I was just gonna, I was gonna make the motion, that's all.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the ten-year lease for Twenty One Pheasant Court Auburn Mass between the Auburn Housing Authority, the Lessor, and the town of Auburn Lessie for a ten-year term beginning May first, two thousand and twenty-one, to April thirtieth, two thousand and thirty-one.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Berthium, seconded by Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ren, Mr. Ren?
No, I'm not abstaining from five A yet, yes on that.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. So to agenda item six B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll vote to approve, I'll make a motion to approve the ten-year lease for Twenty One Pheasant Court Auburn Mass between the town of Auburn, the Sublessor, and the Auburn Youth and Family Services, the Sublessie for a ten-year term beginning May first, two thousand and twenty-one, to April thirtieth, two thousand and thirty-one.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Berthium, seconded by Mr. Carpenter, by a roll call vote, Mr. Ren?
Abstain.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. All right, now with that. We have no table items. We have no board of selectman member items, does any member have anything? Want to add? Seeing none, we have the minutes from February twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-one. Are there any issues or omissions? Seeing none, we'll accept them as read, and I just want to thank everyone for your patience while I struggled through sharing tonight. I didn't know going into it, it was just beforehand that I, I got a call from our chair that she was not going to be able to finish the meeting. So I'm sorry for jumping through it and trying to go through the agenda as I could, but thank you all for your patience.
Not acceptable, you're great.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Ren, by a roll call vote, Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
The vice chair votes yes. Thank you, everyone.
Night everyone.
Night everyone.
Have a good night.